Call the meeting in order and roll call please.
Del Meyer.
Here.
Key Sling.
Here.
Clink Hammer.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Um, first item will be citizens input. Anyone address to council?
Uh, Dale Lessline seventeen two nine one Asbury Road. I'm just here to give you a couple of updates. Uh, first off, uh, we did hit ninety-six percent of the towns in the state of Iowa have now passed their UTV ordinance. Uh, as we are speaking right now, uh, North Liberty, population twenty thousand is now voting on their ordinance. Uh, Waterloo, Iowa has scheduled a work session for, uh, August to work on their UTV ordinance. Um, we had our work session with, uh, Dubuque, uh, about two weeks ago. Uh, could not have gone any better. Uh, Mike Van Milligan and their staff was just absolutely fabulous and they walked us through the process on it and we're really excited about Dubuque. Um, also, uh, two weeks ago when I was here, I mentioned that Ankeny on July third would be passing, uh, their second, uh, reading of their ordinance and waiving the third. And then one of these liars that came up here, uh, blonde haired lady said that she had called Ankeny and said that wasn't going to happen on July third on a vote of five to nothing. They, Ankeny passed their ordinance. They waived the third reading and at nine AM yesterday morning, uh, UTVs are now allowed on Ankeny streets. I wanted to point that out. And another thing is, is, you know, when we gave you the statistics, four out of the five members on this council anyhow, could see the benefits of this and how this could work. But, uh, the lies that were told here, I've been doing this for six years. And do you really think a handful of UTVs in your town is going to create such a problem that they're going to jump onto the sidewalk and hit babies and strollers? It's just unbelievable what was said here. And we're very disappointed in, in you following for some of the lies that were told about us and, you know, towns that move forward find ways to say yes. Towns that go backwards find ways to say no or find excuses. You look at Dyersville and Piasta, they both found ways to say yes. And you guys continue to find excuses to say no. There's a reason why thirty-nine people that live in the city of Asbury have approached me in the last year wanting to leave your town and buy my property to build a house. Because you're not happy with the way your city's being run. And, uh, one other thing I want to address, uh, Russ, um, you said that ninety percent of the emails were against it. Uh, we had none of our supporters, uh, emailing you because clearly, uh, you had the UTV haters playbook and you were being coached by Ann McDonough. And, uh, you were basically seeing all the words that she had on it. But the one person I really feel sorry for is your police chief. I've known Tom Hennaberry for probably close to fifteen years. And I've never known him not to put the best interest of the people of Asbury first and foremost. And for his opinion to be completely ignored and then for him to be disrespected so bad by that sorry excuse of a county supervisor we have is absolutely appalling. And all I want to say to Mr. Hennaberry is, is anyhow frankly, you deserve better anyhow. And if you were to leave this town and take your talents and where you respect to someplace else, I wouldn't blame you. Thank you.
Kevin Hennings twenty-one hundred Messina Court. Um, I haven't seen any signs up that show ATVs, UTVs aren't allowed in our, in our town. Uh, there's one at the bottom of, uh, Hales Mills by Leedham's Bottom, but there's none on, uh, Both Ends, Basbury, Bradford, Middle Road, By Middle Road, Cypress Road, Hickock Road, or Saratoga. Uh, when the TH quoted in the paper, what I had said that the last council meeting was, let's give it a try. But my notes showed that I had quoted Karen Clink Hammer, like Karen said, let's give them a try in the first vote, but how the second vote went, she went against what she said. She thought she was a good idea to just try and see where it went. I had asked Bob Reich what I needed to do to get this ball rolling and, uh, to be considered for a vote. I had done what he had in, in fact, said I needed to do, do what to do. We had walked in together at that first meeting to discuss it. And then I told him what I had done. And then he said, I'm on board. He did vote yes for the first reading. Not on the second reading. That is bad that Bob goes back on his word. I think it's time for Bob to turn in his resignation ASAP. As Asbury, Asbury deserves somebody that is true to their word. All we asked was to just give us a try with the understanding that it could be revoked within twenty-four hours. That was all. Thank you.
Okay, Lynn Hennings twenty-one hundred Messina. And I'm going to read off this too because I don't want to miss anything that I wrote up for this evening's meeting or any one of you. So hello to all of you. And as a follow-up to the last city council meeting, more specifically to the topic of the ATV, UTV, support petition being voted down three to two, I'm here to say that we are back and we are not going away. Thank you Mayor Adams for your comments in opening the meeting and an invitation to our police chief to speak first. Thank you to Chief Hennaberry for your comments and addressing a lot of issues with statistics while putting it all into perspective to educate the folks in attendance at the meeting. It was very unfortunate to have witnessed such disrespect to you during your presentation and others who have challenged you on your actual facts with misinformation. Thank you both council members. Miller and Key Sling, you guys are in different seats tonight. For your comments and support, your open mindedness. It mindset is what moves topics forward for the betterment of all of Asbury residents, not just a few. Council member. Clink Hammer. While we are very disappointed with your no vote in the second reading, we cannot understand how in just two weeks prior to the first reading, you were part of the forty-one yes vote specifically stating, quote, let's give it a try, unquote. In the second reading, we heard you say that you listened to and vote for the people while you stated there were more people in the room that were against it than for it. Your counterpart, council member Miller, who was sitting right next to you stated, the majority of Asbury is not in this room. This is such a contention. This issue is such a contention. Why was it not given a third reading? Councilman Reich. We are also very disappointed with your no vote in the second reading. In talking, listening to you previously, we felt, um, a sense that you were pretty much in favor of it and we're ready to vote right away and it'd be over with. But then you start talking back and forth and became wishy-washy. It sounded as though you were talking out of both sides of your mouth. So if you voted no, just to be safe due to an election here for you, that's quite selfish on your part. Councilman Del Meyer. When asked if Dubuque were to pass an ATV, UTV ordinance, what would you do if it came back around for Asbury? You said, I would probably vote for it. That comment feels like being a follower more than a leader. To our city administrator, Ben. Thank you for your humorous, crooked comments and the telegraph herald art. And we thank Dale Lessline for all of his support, continued guidance and direction. Dale has a wealth of knowledge and is very passionate on this subject. We are walking with him to take our ATV, UTV support mission to the next step. We have a couple of suggestions because I don't know where we are going to go from here, but perhaps we could do a work session. Which was mentioned way early on. I don't know if one ever happened. We had indicated we had an interest. However, we weren't notified that there was one or we would have been there. All of us would have been there and then some. Um, perhaps if not in a work session for us, your meetings, each of you take a city, go talk to the mayor or go talk to the police. Get the stats and then you folks will have them firsthand instead of listening to the we, they that we all went through and experienced two weeks ago. And I got to tell you, it was, we got into a pissing match and that was never, never the intent for us. For it to ever go that way when we started this. Just know that. We were just, we were disappointed in that. And then we have to be sure to include this in newsletters on future updates and maybe perhaps even put this in it, uh, next newsletter, if you're in agreement to resurrect this for additional consideration. Because after all, my goodness, you guys can turn it down twenty-four hours. You can pull the plug on it. What, what does it hurt to try and to have Chief Hennaberry up here? I mean practically the leader, I mean, he's like God in this town. To be not listened to, not even given consideration for twenty-four hours? And then listen to the disrespect.
So I feel like we should take a proactive versus forgetting. I think there are a lot of emotions out there.
And you did a factual break. So in summary, we would like to hear back. Well, actually, as I mentioned too, this is just another mode of transportation on the city of Asbury streets to get to neighboring towns for visits and support their community too. So in summary, we'd like to hear back from the council members on the questions that I just asked, suggestions, and what the next step you would advise us to take. Because we are here and are not going away. Thank you.
Mike Drew, two eighty, Summer Drive. I didn't expect this at all, folks. I had something totally in line, but I will respond to you. The three council members, thank you for voting with the majority and listening to the city of Asbury instead of Ankeny and every place else that you say has passed it. That's great. You're free to move there. Like you can move your property, whatever. Take your ATVs out there if you want. The majority of the people of Asbury have said they do not want it yet. Okay? These three council members, listen to them.
Will you please address the council?
Pardon?
Please address the council.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But three out, the three that voted for it, listened to the majority. And I don't know, Mr. Miller, I don't know where you didn't think majority was, but it was a heavy majority. So all right, that's all I have to say on that. The other thing I was coming up here for, this is a surprise. Uh, Asbury Road, if anybody has not noticed, you have three school zone sign speed limits all the way through here. And the first speed limit posted thirty-five is past Briarwood. And it's all overgrown with shrubbery and stuff. You can't even see it. I would like to suggest for every school zone speed limit, you should post the same sign thirty-five miles an hour. Because people coming through here that are not familiar with it, see that twenty-five and they go twenty-five or less. I don't know if you were aware of that or not, but when you come into Asbury, the first thirty-five mile an hour posted speed limit is out past Briarwood. There's nothing through here at all. Thank you.
My name's Robin Fottenhauer, one seven two nine one Asbury Road. First off and foremost, I'd like to thank you all for at least hearing us, whether it's for or against, pros and cons, everybody's got an opinion. I don't know what it would hurt, but I do appreciate your time and attention to the man. If you're not going to allow, that's your prerogative. If you're not going to allow the ATVs and UTVs, or you do, I really do honestly hope you address the issue of the kids on the scooters. Because I see, we, we drive through town all the time and I see it all the time. That is scary to me, much more scary than having an ATV or UTV on the road. I apologize for anybody's aggression or if they seem angry. We're very passionate. Now Dale has been involved in this for several years, as he stated. Our biggest wall that we hit was the county of Dubuque. And if you give me two seconds, I will explain. We, when I say fight, it's like a verbal fight. It's a contentious like this, going to the meetings and it's, it's time consuming venture. Our biggest opponent, singular person was Sheriff Joe Kennedy. He stood up at every meeting that he could attend. And very passionately stated, you know, if this passes, I want his name and his name and his phone number. And when there's dead children on the side of the road, he, they're going to have to come up and scoop up these dead children and they're going to have to go to their parents' house and tell their parents that their child is no longer with us. And that's on the record in Dubuque County, uh, meetings. And just last week, um, Dale had the opportunity to casually walk past Joe Kennedy at the Piasta Police Department. And Joe Kennedy turned very spitefully previous to Dale is this whole venture. Looked at Dale, shook his hand and said, I want to thank you for keeping everybody safe on the roads and the ATVs and UTVs and keeping this on the forefront. So if I were to say, talk to somebody, maybe that's the man to talk to is Joe Kennedy. Because he was the number one person against us. And apparently, I don't know, I haven't had a conversation with him, but maybe he's had a change of heart. And with a little knowledge becomes a lot of power. Instead of a little fear, becomes everybody running away, putting their heads in the sand. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Um, there's somebody on, on Zoom, Beth, do you know if they're? Okay. 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 All right. Then there will be no more citizens input. We'll move on to, Beth, this proclamation, I don't see it. That's for next week, next week.
I, yes, that came after we posted the agenda. So I put that on for the next meeting.
Yeah, next meeting, I asked the committee to come in. So, all right, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Anything for separate discussion? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Call roll please.
Miller.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Key Sling.
Aye.
Clink Hammer.
Aye.
Okay, that carries five zero. Our first, uh, item is Resolution one zero one of twenty twenty-three. A resolution to approve a second driveway access for twenty twenty Majestic Ridge. Recall this was.
Yes, this is, um, from back way, in the wayback machine. Um, however, there have been changes. Um, one, they're putting, um, less driveway in. So they now, the first request was to do a wider driveway and a second curb cut. Um, the wider driveways are no longer, um, requested. It's just the second, um, driveway access. Um, this is usual and customary. They, you know, they come to council all the time. And this is a case where, um, the Public Works Director, uh, Police Chief and the Stormwater Manager have all recommended that, um, approval for this. He's on the line if you have any questions. He's the iPhone.
Need to have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number one oh one of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion, second discussion or questions?
I've got one question. All of the surrounding is within our zoning ordinance, like far enough away from the house next door to it, correct?
This is Bridge, I believe. And they have over, all those lots are over an acre.
Yeah, it's pretty close to the one next door. And that's why I'm just making sure.
It's the setbacks.
Sorry, what was it?
It meets the required, um, side setbacks.
That sounds great. It's very nice.
Okay, any other questions? Comment? Call roll please.
Miller.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Key Sling.
Aye.
Clink Hammer.
Aye.
That's approved five zero. We next we have Resolution one zero two twenty twenty-three. A resolution approving pay app number eleven for the Meadows Clubhouse Reconstruction Project.
So pay app, uh, number eleven is clearly for, there's already completed in the amount of ten thousand or that amount is requested is ten thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. Uh, has the required signatures from, uh, both Mark from Conlon and Andrew Dorgin, that we would recommend have you approve.
Make a motion to accept Resolution one oh two of twenty twenty-three, Resolution for Pay App number eleven for the Meadows Clubhouse Project.
I'll second.
Motion, second discussion. Call roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Key Sling.
Aye.
Clink Hammer.
Aye.
That is approved five zero. Thank you, Jeremy. Next item is Resolution ten, one oh three of twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving pay app number four for the Hales Mill Road Reconstruction Project Phase Two.
Yeah, good evening. Um, so update on the Hales Mill project. Uh, Craig, want to keep it a little quiet about the paving situation, but potentially middle of next week. Um, so there should be some notice coming out either towards the end of this week or early next week about that to everybody. Um, so they're moving right along there. Yeah, yeah. So anyways, I thought I'd, I just mentioned that, that it is coming. They've been working hard towards that all summer here. Um, with that being said, um, the payment that they're asking for tonight is for the remainder of the sanitary sewer installation work needed. And then a large portion of the storm sewer, um, installation as well. Um, the total amount for this pay request is at three hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-one cents. Um, with that being said, the amount of retainage that'll be held is a little over thirty-two thousand dollars with the balance to finish, including retainage just north of one point five million. So unless council has questions, MSA would recommend approval of this pay request.
Still on schedule?
Yeah. Um, so we did, we did calculate it out with their working days. Um, right now it times out to sometime kind of in the early part, middle of September that they would, um, run out of their working days. Um, they think that they could probably meet that deadline, but again, that's all weather dependent. So, um, if there's all of a sudden a bad stretch of weather and rain days, those working days are saved and then they just get added on once the weather's nice. So they're, they're on track to finish on schedule.
Thank you.
I, I just have a question, mainly maybe for Beth. Um, when do we get, is it DOT that we're doing this with? When did they pay their share?
Um, we do monthly pay requests. Um, um, we, I work with, um, Nate and, um, we submit, submit a monthly claim based on the work that's been done in this pay request.
Okay, great. That's, thank you.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution one oh three of twenty twenty-three, uh, Resolution approving pay app number four to Eastern Iowa Escavating. The amount of three hundred and ten thousand dollars, nine hundred and twenty and fifty-one cents.
I'll second.
Motion, second, final discussion.
It's moving along and it, the, the neighbors are getting excited and there, there has been some questions. The tenant, we're just waiting to see them when they set the pens, get the favor in there.
Yeah, once core out starts and gets towards being done, then they know it's coming. But the information will be coming out plenty ahead of time. So we'll, we'll keep everyone informed.
Nate, I do have a question. Um, I see that we're going to request core samples next. Are we going to test that before they put cement down on Hales Mill?
That, that wouldn't timeout well enough, no. Um, I, I talked with, uh, TerraCon and they said the time window on that is about four to six weeks that it would take to get their core samples to their testing lab and get all the results back. So the first phase will be paved before we'd be able to get the results back.
So if we test it, are we going to tell them what to put in the mix? I mean, that's why, that's why I'm struggling with the whole core thing because the testing because.
That's where I was getting at is because if, if core testing isn't going to be done in time, do it, it's going to answer my next question.
Yeah. My, my point was that if, if it was done, are we going to go tell them to do a different mix? I, I mean, if we tell them to do something different, then there's no longer a warranty because we're telling them what they're doing and they're not making a decision.
I guess if there's a problem and they, and the testing bore that out, I guess I would look for them to tell us how they were going to do it differently. So they wouldn't have a problem.
Yeah.
That's all, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Any other comments? Call roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Key Sling.
Aye.
Clink Hammer.
Aye.
That's approved five zero. The final is Resolution one zero four of twenty twenty-three. A resolution approving an estimate for petrographic analysis, concrete core samples.
Yeah. So I guess the main reason I brought this back was just, I think at a recent council meeting, it, it came up and I, I said I'd bring the numbers back. Uh, you know, we, we had gotten these back in March of this year, um, initially, and at that time it kind of was set aside uh, for the moment. And when it came up again, I thought I would bring the numbers back. So I was just kind of here for your, your consideration. Um, I think Beth included the dollar amounts in the agenda there on board docs for whether or not you would approve a certain number of samples to be tested.
Just to know, remind you, the samples are in the hands of TerraCon. Neither the city nor MSA has any contact with them. The, the chain of custody is there. So if you choose not to, to do this, you can do it at any time where you're not compromising the integrity of the process or the integrity of the, the actual analysis.
Certainly be done at a later date.
What, what would be the benefit of doing it now then? It just been my question. If it's, if it's, impact anything that we're doing going forward. To have the samples there, I think that's a great idea. I think that's, I don't know that there's any reason to test.
I believe the main benefit for it would be is if it turns into a situation when it comes time, the, the city, you guys determine what you want to try and have done to correct the issues over on Spring Green Drive and Sunset. Um, at that time, if there's any pushback from the contractor, it'd be another route to take and get those results. And then say, here, you know, this is what we did. We tested and found this, so fix it, you know? So it's just another avenue to get more backup data through that there is an issue that was caused by means, methods, materials.
Are we getting any pushback from the residents on their driveways?
Um, I haven't heard any comments recently, but there have been phone calls and emails about some of the approaches from just a couple of people over on the street. I know it is an issue there and, and that's something that we're, you know, we're, we're working on yet. So.
Yeah, well, I've been notified that we were aware of it. It's, it's a warranty issue and they're not going to be left high and dry. We're just not acting at this time.
Yeah, I think, you know, going back to that article in Manchester, um, from about a month or two ago, um, and their street issues. You know, I think you guys have the benefit that there is a four-year maintenance period on the street. A lot of cities, I know Manchester has a two-year maintenance is what they said with those projects. So they need to figure out what they want to do ahead of time. Kind of gives you guys as a council extra time window to see what other communities are doing with these same issues and see what works the best to correct them.
So Nate, as engineer, would you recommend we test it now or just hold them until we need them?
It wouldn't matter. I mean, you can get the results now or hold it and test it when you need it. It, it won't matter either way. Thank you.
So, so in, in line with the Russ's question here, um, when I've done samples in the past for other construction projects that I've worked on, we take, we take a sleeve, you know, and I don't know, half dozen of, three, half dozen, something to that effect. And they're tested at different points in times for, for their hardness. Is there only one sample that we're looking at right now? Or do they have other samples that we could come back later and test again if we needed to?
Right. So there are, we took four core samples, three from Spring Green Drive and one from Sunset. I think probably what you're, you're, you might be thinking of is when you do the sampling and then there's a, like a thirty day period. So what a lot of times you'll do is you'll make cylinders and test them at seven days, fourteen days, and then twenty-eight days. Um, just to see the relation of strength over time and when the concrete needs strength. This, um, wouldn't be really related to that. It would be more of a lab analysis that tells you more about materials, how it failed on the. that tells you more about materials, how it failed on the surface. But you can also break those samples and get what the strength of the concrete is as well.
Uh, yeah, I, I get what you're saying, but what I'm, what I'm, guess I'm looking for is, do we have more than, and you said we have four samples from different places. So we do have multiple samples if we need to test one now.
Sure, yeah. I mean, if you wanted to test one, you could test one and hold the other three.
Beth, did you have a recommendation on this?
My recommendation is to just hold off until, um, we kind of see what's going on with some of the other communities. You know, and, and also, you know, why spend the money? And if we're able to work it out with, you know, the contractor and the, you know, the supplier, without, I, I see the samples as something we would need more if we would, the testing part of it more, if we would need to go to court on it.
Your motion to approve?
We, we can also make a motion to not do it at this time.
Well, I think if there's not a motion to approve ergo, you're doing nothing. No motion to second, then the resolution is effectively. Am I make a motion? Okay. Then we'll move on. Take citizens input for anything not previously discussed. Okay, we have the police report, GM report, rental inspection readiness assessment. Any comments, questions or motion to accept?
I make a motion to approve the reports.
Second.
Any final comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay, uh, all right, let's start with Kurt and go around.
Well, as, as you all know, we had our Music in the Park Festival this Saturday and it was stellar. Weather was stellar, the food trucks were stellar, the happiness was stellar, everything was stellar, even Jim Adams stellar. So, uh, anybody, anybody that, that didn't show, I, I know I, I saw Karen and I had a long talk with, uh, with Craig Miller while he was there. And of course, Jim Adams is always there, so, um, I didn't see either, either Bob or, or Russ, so I don't know if you made it or not, and I'm not like pointing a finger, but um, it was a great time and if you weren't there, you, you missed out.
I agree with Kurt. It was an awesome time. The kids love it and I really appreciate all the hard work that was put into it.
You, Russ?
Um, I'm going to choose not to respond. I'm going to respond. I've been at Music at the Park other years. Sometimes there are conflicts and you can't make it and I had conflicts this year. So I'll tell you that.
All right. Frank?
Uh, I understand congratulations are in order for Jim, but we're making sure the weather was so good for it. Uh, but it was a great event. It was good to see it, see people up there again. I remember going to that when our kids were young and how much fun they enjoyed it throughout the day. And it's a little different, seeing it through our eyes now is being a little bit older, so. And I believe that the majority of Asbury enjoys, uh, Music in the Park.
Yeah, thank you. I don't have anything. Beth, any?
Um, just maybe take some time for as council people to, um, fill out the rental, rental inspection and readiness questionnaire that's out there and, and, uh, take, we'll take your input.
Yeah, go ahead.
One, one question for Tom. What is our policy on electric scooters on the sidewalks?
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need adjourned, thank you.